Okay, all right, everyone, we will get started. I'll call the meeting to order and welcome this evening. We have a couple special guests this evening from Girl Scouts 20339, and I think they're going to come forward and lead us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, girls. That was very nice of you. And so you're going to be attending our meeting this evening, huh? And be able to kind of learn a lot, to report back to your whole troop? Great, well, thank you so much.
No doubt.
Okay, could we get a roll call, Mary?
Bolson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Killen.
Here.
Kupinski.
Here.
Coburn.
Okay, scheduled business is first on the agenda is communications, and this is accepting Kelly Gillett's resignation from the library board. This is on page three.
Move that we accept Kelly's resignation and send a letter of thanks.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is the 2014 Human Relations Commission's annual report. So Kim, are you going to be leading the way, and you and Graham?
Sure.
Okay.
Kim Whitley, I'm the chair of the Human Relations Commission, and I'm looking to have Graham and Tom before. And we just, we have traditionally and want to keep annually reporting back to the city council, our annual report of what we've done over the last year. So I believe you all have a brief review of our activities and a list of our recent participants, and so we're here if you have any questions. Otherwise, I just wanted to present that report to you.
You guys are one of our very busy and active commissions that we have in the city, so we really appreciate all that you do. Does the council have questions over the report?
No, I will make a comment, though. Whoever did the subsequent commissioners, the resignations, reappointments, and new appointments, did a wonderful job. That is the hardest job in the whole world, when you have people coming on, going off, this term, that term, and stuff. So whoever did it, did a great job.
Yeah, it brought back a lot of memories, you know, seeing a lot of the names. It's like, wow, where'd the years go?
Yeah, it's nice to see the names.
It is, it really is, so I appreciate that.
So do you see anything this upcoming year that the commission will be wanting to be active on, or you're still going to do River Rhythms?
We're hoping to participate in River Rhythms. We've been contacted by Lynn County Mental Health about working with them on Mental Health Month, which is in May. I believe they're working on a proclamation which they want us to collaborate on and potentially present to the city council for review. We, of course, want to participate and support National Night Out and Festival Latino, and that's kind of, from a high level, all we have, but, right, LV, diversity, continuing our diversity collaboration with LBCC and in partnership with the City of Corvallis as Martin Luther Committee.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Oh, that's wonderful, so. Okay, any other questions?
Great.
Well, thank you. Good job. Wes, did you want to say something?
I'd just like to give my annual thanks to the commission, as I think the council may remember, I volunteered nine years ago to serve as staff support. That would not have worked if it had just been me. Marilyn has been also assisting with that, and it's really a pleasure to work with the Human Relations Commission. Just really positive people doing great things for the community.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Thanks to Rich for showing up last month, and good suggestion.
Well, and thanks for the quick action to correct the oversight.
Okay, great.
I had in the past, there's probably the middle of last year, when the Human Rights Award was announced that it was being sought, that people were being sought, I noticed that while if you were a nonprofit business, you could receive the award, but if you were a for-profit business, you couldn't receive the award, just the way it was set up. And I first asked, and then got ahold of Kim, and they talked about it some, and I showed up last month, and they changed the standard, so it's now no longer differentiated.
Yeah. You know, there's another thing, maybe if the commission, it's just dawned on me that you mentioned this, if you would like to increase that award for a high school student, you know, if you want to think about that. I just really feel we need to get our youth more engaged in city government, and I thought maybe that would be, you know, one way we can kind of try to reach out to that age population. So it's up to the commission, but if you want to, you know, look at that, kind of adding that to the awards, I think that would be wonderful, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next is business from the public. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to bring an item forward? Okay, all right, not seeing anyone. Council, we have the ordinance that's on page 12, and Jim, would you like to do the first reading?
Before we continue, I think part of the first item was the situation where people who cannot read or speak English get help. We have this in our agenda.
Yes.
Is that, am I ahead of time?
Yes.
You're ahead of time.
If you provide agenda, it would come up here.
No, I'm not talking about that.
Oh, sorry?
It's a limited English proficiency.
On page 25.
Oh, we're not there yet.
Oh, okay, I thought that was part of the...
Nope, we're on page 12.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Pardon me.
Okay, all right. Jim, do you want to read the first reading?
An ordinance to levy assessments against property specifically benefited by sewer connections and the assessment of sewer parks and transportation systems development charges for property described as tax lot 3401 of parcel 11S, 3W, 3A, and site address 331 Northeast Charlotte Street, and declaring an emergency.
Okay.
Would the council like to do?
Move to have it read a second time in title only? Second.
Second, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, second reading.
An ordinance to levy assessments against property specially benefited by sewer connections and the assessment of sewer parks and transportation systems development charges for property described as tax lot 3401 of parcel 11S, 3W, 3A, and site address 331 Northeast Charlotte Street, and declaring an emergency.
Move adoption of the ordinance. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is on page 15, and this is adopting the limited English proficiency LEP plan. And Dick, is this the one that you had questions on?
Yes, yes, it is, yeah. And I wanted to comment that I don't see any of the Scandinavian languages on that list, and I guess the assumption is that all Scandinavians are literate in English.
Well, that's a relevant question, Dick, now that we're losing our lone Scandinavian speaker.
Well, does it speak? Does it speak Norse?
Yeah, I can speak Norwegian, yes.
Ah.
Excuse me, we have to have someone translate that, because this is a public meeting.
Yeah.
I can speak Norwegian.
I can answer that question, Dick. The card that's in your, or the sheet of languages that's in the packet is an older one. That's the one that we were working from when we first drew up the plan. We've since got new lists from the contractor that we're working with, the person, the company that we call when we need somebody to do interpretation, and it does break down the languages that are available through that service into geographic areas, and Scandinavia is specifically included in that.
Excellent.
So, we're good.
Thank you.
Or we'll just call Mark.
Pardon me?
We'll just call Mark over in Corvallis.
We know where he's going to be.
Somebody doesn't know Finnish.
So...
Unless it's a Western Finnish, which is really Swedish.
I'm sorry, what?
The Western Finns speak Swedish.
Okay.
As well as the regular Finnish.
They're not on half Swedish, yeah. Okay.
Move adoption of the resolution on page 15. Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Mayor, if I could just make a brief comment about this, I think the council is aware of the history of this, that it, this really was sort of brought to us by citizens. It came to one of our, to our Human Relations Commission. They reviewed it and went through a pretty long process. We had Jorge Salinas, our, now our assistant city manager, is the person who actually sort of came up with the draft plan, Ian Marilyn, and again, just a good piece of work. It eliminates one issue that we potentially could have with compliance with federal, with accepting federal funds, but more importantly, I think it lays out for folks how we can accommodate people who have, you know, different language needs, and it gives guidance to our staff. And if you, one of the aspects of this plan, of adopting the plan, was a survey that was done to determine how often we were dealing with people who had language issues here in the city, and I was a little surprised that, you know, we were running into that issue quite a bit. So I think it's a really positive step, and good thing for the city.
It's great, and great work on it, too.
Yeah, interesting to see all the different kinds of script that they're using.
Oh, boy, yeah, it's amazing. Okay, next item, council is D2. This one's on your revised agenda, and this would be the handout on the resolution over the LBCC, the $2.9 million for economic development dollars for workforce development training.
Madam Mayor, this, of course, was an issue that the council dealt with just on Monday evening. We've had it, and of course, had it before you, I think, on multiple occasions, where we've been considering a partnership between, that would involve LBCC, seven of our local industries, although actually, I think all local industries have the potential to benefit from it, and the city. This was something, the need itself, the issue of workforce training, is one that's been on the community agenda, really, ever since I've been here, and I think this is the, sort of the first organized systematic approach to how we might deal with that, and I think the contract, again, we discussed, or the agreement we discussed at some length on Monday, so I'll be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, any questions? Dick?
Well, not really questions, and I kind of hate to pour cold water on it, but I still think that we have to follow our policy that seemed to be forming, that we were going to use our economic development money in the form of loans that can be paid back, and I was really hoping that this could be a loan that would be paid back. And I know it looks like we're daddy warbucks with a lot of money, but it seems to me that we have, if we're going to be spending away, giving away the money, that we've got needs in our fire department, we've got other needs, we've got streets that are in bad shape, and I really think that it's a mistake to be just giving it away. And then I look at the, and I realize it's a draft, but I think the language on the final product is about the same, and then that says workforce program funding agreement, and under item two of the now there for's, item 2D, the very last paragraph there, says "All funding requests made of said, and all industry determinations concerning the use of said funds shall be approved in writing with a copy thereof provided to the city by a majority vote of the committee formed in accordance to paragraph A." And paragraph A says "Work with LBCC to form an advisory committee made up of seven representatives of local industry." Now, are they going to be coming back on a regular basis concerning requests of the city for more money? And I hope not. I hope we're not going to just be giving this away on a regular basis.
No, I think what the intent is, is that you've authorized up to the 2.9 million, and what that committee will deal with is how that 2.9 million gets spent, or the other point that the industries have made, and LB is, is that if they do not need the entire amount, then they would not expend that amount, so...
I can't imagine that they're not going to find some pressing need for the whole darn thing.
Well, to that point, it is for the stuff that is on the list. It is not, it is not to go buy a futuristic whatever other than what's on the list, or something that looks pretty much like it.
Time limit on this?
There is, there's a schedule for our, the first payment, I think, is to start the program with $700,000 in this fiscal year, and then the balance to be spent within the next fiscal year.
Okay. Well, I hope we keep close track of this, because I'd like to see what the final thing is, and...
That was my heartburn.
...I guess I'll bet all the doughnuts that they figure out how to spend the whole damn thing.
That was my heartburn, and I think we've got it close enough so that, well, it isn't perfect, but, you know, almost nothing man does is perfect.
Yeah.
I mean, I would have rather seen a contract with everybody's, you know, signed in blood, but, you know, realistically, you're not going to get seven different companies to, along with LBCC, to do that.
Well, you know how it is, with good intentions, it's kind of the road to hell. Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to speak in strong support of the agreement. I think this is the first time we've seen the business community, the community college, the city, members of the chamber come together for the sole purpose of make sure we have training to get adequately trained employees and sustain the businesses we have here in town. Now, we talk a lot about going out and recruiting jobs, and I think it was Counselor Coburn one time mentioned that it's much easier to retain the clients that you have than go attract new clients, and I want to see every one of these seven businesses succeed, and they can't succeed if they don't have qualified employees, and this is our opportunity to help that happen. And if we only hit the minimum number of employees that's identified in the agreement, that's more than what we would have gotten under the Pepsi Agreement, and my, based upon the material previously submitted, I think we're going to see a greater return for that investment than what we had previously anticipated. So I agree with Rich, it wouldn't, it doesn't include everything that I would want it to, or in the format I would have wanted, but I think it comes with the commitment from the city, LB, and all the business jurisdictions, and the workforce development group to make this happen.
Well, it'll be interesting to see if that's the way it does happen, and I am kind of dubious that it will. And I'm going to point out, too, that that same amount of money, I think I remember correctly, could have been raised by adding two cents per thousand to the bond measure that they float. Why didn't they just put it on the bond measure instead of come begging to us?
I guess my only comment is, we often comment slash complain about other governmental bodies telling us how to do our business. We're not in a position of telling other governmental bodies how to do their business.
I don't think we go begging to other governmental bodies for their cash.
Well, with that, I move to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Steve.
Any more?
Rich moved, and there were the twins who seconded. It's okay.
Any more discussion?
Twins.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, motion carried. Which one, no? Okay. Next, council is the adoption of the consent calendar, and I'll entertain a motion unless you'd like to pull an item off for discussion.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now, on page 49, this is the wetlands integration with Albany-Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility Outfalls. So, Mark?
Sure, so this is a project I hope you remember. We've spoken to you about several times. It's a project to put in a valve that will protect the wetlands from potential flooding, which can happen under certain storm conditions. River flows and flows at the water reclamation facility, and this problem really became evident in a storm in January 2012, I believe it was, in which we had some manholes. We had flow going, rather than out of the wetlands, going back up into the wetlands and damaged some manholes, and that's where we discovered the problem. We did a hydraulic analysis. So the installation of this valve will protect the wetlands, we'll be able to close that valve so that we don't overtop and flood out the wetlands under those conditions. You'll see the budget, the cost is higher than the budget. Our original budget estimate was kind of a placeholder, we didn't have a lot of detail. As we analyze the actual costs, we are comfortable that the bids do reflect the cost to do the work, and that additional cost will be covered by reserves that we have.
Okay, is there questions? Over the project? If not, what would you like to do with this item?
Move toward the bid. Second.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any discussion?
I'm just curious, Mark, the Tornado Soft Excavation LLC, is it really, I don't know what the first number is, they, their bid was $199, is that right?
That's correct. The way they filled out their bid form incorrectly, they gave a total cost when it was actually supposed to be a unit cost, so, but, as you added up their cost, the way they wrote it down would have been over $2 million, but if you corrected that area, they still would be the second low bid.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Question?
Uh-huh.
The bridge right next to it?
Yes.
That's still a county bridge? Or did they give that to us when we have land on both sides of the...
No, I believe that's still a county bridge. There was some discussion at one time about the city taking over that bridge, or actually relocating the access road, but I believe it's still a Lynn County bridge.
Yep, mm-hmm. Okay, next is the report. So this is the Oak Street LID, and setting for a public hearing. This is on page 53.
Right, so we are finally bringing back to you the proposed final assessment for the Oak Street project. As you may recall, you may not, since it was so long ago, the actual assessment methodology was one that was worked up in agreement with the Lowe's Property Group. They proposed this assessment methodology, and if you remember, the project was really broken into two parts. We had the punch-through, the section between Pacific and Ninth, and then the other portion of Oak from Ninth to Queen. And through the discussions with Lowe's, Lowe's agreed to make some cash payments and participated in the assessments otherwise. We held off on bringing this back to you as we worked with Lowe's to make sure that they were going to sign and open, you know, commit to opening their store. If they had not done that, this would have been a potential vehicle for the council to try and get some of the money back out of Lowe's by adjusting how you did the LID assessment methodology. The methodology holds to what you approved originally, and I would bring your attention to page 56. I think that's probably the best page. There's a lot of different numbers here, but page 56 really gives you the summary of all the different participating funds and people into this project. You see SDC's paid over $3.5 million, parks will be assessed over $332,000. They'll pay that over 10 years. We have this other city funding, there was a funding gap, and council chose not to identify a funding source for that at the time, rather have that discussion now. Staff is proposing that those funds come out of the SBC settlement funds, and really what that would mean is, we're just not paying back that fund, this $309,000, because that's the fund that was the bank of the SDCs to get the project built. We had our water capital fund participate, and then you see the Lowe's development team, between their assessments and their other cash payments, over $750,000, and then Ping's Garden Restaurant will participate, $10,000 for their water line.
Question?
Sure.
Wasn't the water line set in place prior to starting on Oak for Ping's? Didn't they already do that before?
They had some frontage that they had not, where the water line did not go along their frontage, and I think they actually had a petition waiver, and as part of all the negotiations, they were set at a fixed amount of $10,000.
Thank you.
So with your approval tonight, what that will do, that will set the public hearing for April 22nd, at which time you'll hear, excuse me, I'm still here. You'll hear any public testimony, and at that time, you'd levy final assessments. Lowe's has committed, as part of the development agreement, Jim was able to negotiate with them to commit to a cash upfront payment, and they won't be financing any of their payments, so that would mean a $750,000 shot back into the settlement fund balance.
Okay, all right. And would the council like to make a motion for, so we can set that public hearing?
I just move the requested action on page 53. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Mayor, follow-up related, so where are we with the application for the permits for Lowe's?
We are continuing to work with Lowe's. They are, they are active in getting their building permits, so we're close. I can't tell you exactly when those permits will be issued, but we are having active discussions with them, our staff is.
So they're going to be issued as all permits at a single point in time, or they're going to be issued their parking lot stuff and then their building separate, or...
I am not sure. I'll have to check on that.
It'd be interesting, though, when we think we'll see somebody out on the site throwing dirt.
So I can get back to you, I can send an email out to the council if that would be accepted.
We should be fine.
Okay. Next on the agenda is an appointment, and this is appointing Tim McLeod to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. This is on page 61. I'm going to entertain a motion.
Move to approve the appointment.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And I think, Tim, is that you? Hello there, it'd be nice to meet you, so, yeah. This is Tim McLeod, so thank you for volunteering to want to be on our Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. So this is the first time we've had a couple vacancies, and we hadn't had as many applicants we usually do, so I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate to want to be involved in, and I think you'll really enjoy being on the commission. It's a great group, and they get pretty active on that committee.
Very excited.
Okay, great. Yeah, well, thank you so much, so welcome aboard.
All right.
So, thank you. Okay, next is business from the council, and let's see, Bessie, anything?
I just want to say that I won't be at the May 13th, I think it's the 13th, council meeting. I'll be gone.
Okay, all right, thank you for the heads up.
That's all.
Okay, Bill?
The Lowe's project is out for bid, so we're working on putting together a bid for the electrical portion of it, so it looks like they're going to build.
Yeah, after all these years.
Yeah.
So, okay, Dick?
Nothing?
All right, Rich? Nothing, alright, Rich?
Um, see, the transient lodging tax is up.
Yeah.
And I would like to caution us to think, well, great, it's, it's up, it means we got more money. But if you listen to the hoteliers, the money is coming from single night stays, mostly off of the freeway. And by way of explanation, if what we're trying to accomplish is to have more economic activity in Albany with this, you need multiple night stays. Because if I'm a salesman driving down the road, I'm going from Medford to Seattle, and I get to Albany, and I, I pull off, so what do I do? I find myself a hotel. Uh, I put my stuff away, I check my email. I then feed myself. This is not a, an opportunity generally for a culinary delight. It's a, I'm hungry, I need to eat, so I do what's close. The next morning, I go down and I have the free breakfast that the hotel provides. I get my vehicle, and I leave. Now, it's great that that happens. It is wonderful that we get paid for it, but I don't do any shopping. I don't come downtown. I don't, you know, it, we're not quote, slowing them down long enough to take something that we have and stick in their pocket and reach and pick and, pick the money out of their pocket. So I, I think, yeah, it's great, but just, I guess, I would ask you to use temper in your joy. Because while it's great, it isn't, the world's wonderful.
Okay, alright, is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Well, that was a wonderful segue into what I'm going to be coming up with now, because I just had a meeting with, uh, some of the board of the ABA, and they wanted me to ask, um, semi-formally, if there would a, was a convenient date in either, uh, May or October, that ABA could set up a day-long tour, uh, with a, one of the large tour buses, showing exactly what they do on one of these package tours, where they stop and go shopping, and, uh, go other places and things like that. And they wanted just me to get it on to the radar screen to say, if there was a convenient date that worked for everybody, they wanted to put together a tour for city council, uh, just to see what in fact actually happens on these tours.
Sounds like fun.
Yeah.
So we have to come up with, like Floyd mentioned, it, well, maybe, you know, he's going to be in Hawaii, in October, he's going to be hunting, so that maybe takes out those two hunts.
I have so much fun with you guys every month, I don't need another meeting.
So, so we just have to kind of, I guess, work it around, figure out what, what would be potentially a couple of, uh, convenient dates that might work in May and/or October, that they could try and set up a, a process to make that happen.
Uh-huh. So could you go ahead and ask ABA if they could send out a doodle poll, um, to the council?
One of those polls?
Yes, one of those doodle polls. Because in that, then they can put dates down, and everybody can check off to see which one they're available on. Those, those work, um, well, to be able to, um, narrow down a date, so. Okay, that, that is?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Okay, Floyd?
Yes, at, at your seat tonight, I placed a, a map of the area of Valley View and Countryman. Do you remember, this is the issue that came before us last month, about the bus stop and people parking along the, um, the pavement on Countryman Circle? And then potential issues with the adjacent property owners. Following that meeting, I went out on site, and I met with the, um, owners of the property, on both on the east and the west side of Countryman, and north of Valley View. And then yesterday, we had a meeting here in the Willamette Room with the school district, APD. Sharon and myself were there, Marilyn was there, representatives of the homeowners that live down on Countryman Circle, and the owners of 2765. And we looked at several items. We looked at potential relocation of bus stops, impact of timing, kids being longer on the bus, moving the bus stop down to North Albany Park, perhaps having the bus stop further down Valley View. And after being up there on site, um, what you see between the little dash lines is the city has a 60-foot right-of-way. That pavement is only 20 to 22 foot wide, and a little bit off of center. And closest, the two parking, there are two existing paved parking adjacent to that asphalt area. Uh, and they're closer to Valley View. The area south, or to the north of what, you see that little Y driveway at 2765, there is an unpaved, ungravelled shoulder, in which sometimes, um, because of the number of cars that are waiting there for the buses to drop off kindergarten through middle school, some people park on that grass. The grass is in the public right-of-way, it's soft, and it gets destroyed. Yet the property owners on 2765 have been maintaining that for over 18 years. I looked at a potential solution that I thought was simple, uh, pretty straightforward. Not everybody got exactly what they wanted, but the solution I proposed and was generally agreed to by the people is that we mark off additional six foot, uh, off the edge of the existing pavement north of the two that are there. And we either gravel it or gravel it and put a little asphalt, and that gives a total of four parking spaces. The property owners at 2765 were okay with that. I've not had a, uh, a conversation with the property owner at 2669, but I believe that would be okay with them also. And it would retain that bus stop, retain parking spaces for up to four parent cars, dropping those kids off and picking them up. Uh, the parents were made aware that U-turns are not allowed, um, under state statute by the police department. And, uh, three-point turns on that roadway are not safety, uh, are not a safe movement. And they're taking liability into their own hands, and so they've been made aware of the risk. But I think this is a reasonable solution to a problem that probably never should have developed in the first place. It should have been neighbor to neighbor, walking up and saying, "We have a problem, what can we do about it?" Like, a lot of things, it escalated into emotional approach. And I think we de-escalated that emotion and found a reasonable approach. I've checked with Public Works. Uh, we think that there's a reasonable way to get that done. Either our own crews do it, we can contract with it, or perhaps Benton County can do it. And when I measured the area out, we're talking about less than four yards of gravel. You know, that's not even a half a dump truck load to solve a problem. And in my, my view, solving a problem that keeps the kids safe for four yards worth of gravel is well worth it. My commitment to the people was that I'd bring it back to council, see if I can get council concurrence to have Public Works staff move ahead with that.
Okay, any questions? Floyd?
Question, do we have any issues with, uh, creating it as a temporary or foundational, so it doesn't just fall apart, just with some little overlay on it or something?
Um, that's why I said we'd overexcavate the mud and put down six or eight inches of rock, and perhaps an inch and a half of asphalt. Maybe we put all rock, but I'd leave that to Public Works.
Hokey-dokey.
Go for it.
Okay, alright.
Do we have concurrence from council to proceed?
No.
Would you like it in a motion?
So funding for that then comes out?
It would come out of our street fund. It's maintained in the public right-of-way.
Yeah, I, I think this came up, this became a good resolution, you know, because there, um, there was a lot of differences. Um, it was kind of neighbor against neighbor, and, and I think this'll solve a problem. The, the only thing would be is if there's ever more, if there's more families down Countryman that are needing to use that bus stop, and, and if there ends up being more than four cars, then we're still going to be having kind of, trying to figure out where we're going to put in, put more cars. But, um, I believe, what I'm hearing, that Fir Grove is going to be opening up, so things could be changing, too. Might not be using this bus stop, might be accessing another one, so.
One thing the school district did point out is the reason they don't send a bus all the way down to Countryman Circle is that bus route is a 84 or 85 passenger bus, and that is a very narrow piece of asphalt that makes that circle. And, uh, they don't want to put their bus down that circle.
Yeah, mhm. I mean, it could be in the future, if Fir Grove opens up, they could be bringing in smaller buses. It's just, you never know, but, um...
I guess my, my thought is, we can't anticipate everything in the future. This is a reasonable solution for the issue we have today, and we ought to try it. If it works, great. If it means we have to tweak it in the future, we'll address it when we know what the problem is.
Yeah, mhm. Okay, so maybe you have a motion to the, to direct staff?
I think everybody shook their head yes.
You think so? Okay, alright.
Thank you very much.
Okay, great.
I think that, we have one member of the, uh, of the, the parents that live down on Countryman in the audience.
I can hear my girl's talent.
Okay. Alright, okay, is that it, Lloyd?
Yes, thank you.
Didn't have anything else? Okay, um, council, I had from, carry over from Monday, um, was the GMO ballot measure for the no on 289, that, um, we've been asked if we could, um, be able to endorse, um, the no side of that campaign. So I said I, there was information, and I emailed out the, um, ballot measure itself and, um, information on it, so.
So I move that we, I move that we stand against the measure.
Second.
Okay.
I'd like to ask, do we have information from the people that are proposing the measure?
Um, that was the part that I sent you by email that was on the voters' pamphlet. So there was the yes part of the voters' pamphlet statement.
I didn't see that.
Yeah, that was in there. Um, I'm, I'm not familiar with any of the proponents of it.
Well, I think it has to do with Monsanto and their, uh, essentially monopolizing the seed business by saying anybody who has their genes and their stuff has to pay them, they get sued, and so forth. So I, I can't vote for this until I learn more about what the people proposing the measure have in there.
Okay, so, okay, any other discussion on it? There's a motion and a second.
Hold question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, alright, motion carried with one no. Okay, and that's it that I had. Wes?
Didn't have anything additional tonight.
Okay, staff have anything? So, alright, um, we're having a quick meeting tonight, so, and the Girl Scouts are really lucky now. Because a couple weeks ago, we were here till almost 11:30 at night, so, yeah. Okay, so our next, um, is work session April 20th, and regular session is April 22nd. And with that, we adjourned.